Not quite that. It's in a little time.
I can see so on the wall, right? Okay, we have a floor. Let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that we accept the warrant for the school as presented. You're still waiting for the town? Does anyone have put that off for both?
Let's do that.
Okay, I move that we take that out of order until we receive the second warrant.
Okay. What, first order of business is that you want to, you want to listen? This is the minutes. Too many stacks here. Yes. The reason we're confused is that our clerk has made a really neat and tidy selection of minutes, and it looks very much like an agenda.
It's perfect.
Well done.
Well done. I was going to read that one.
Okay, so we're meeting now as the board assessors, and the first order of business is to review and consider recommendations of the abatements from RCS Assessment Services. And here we have Josh Barry here to work with us through those. Want to step up to the table or?
Branch here, right on, Josh.
Because it looks like there's lots to review, so.
I can do that. Just to give a summary, this is the list of, all these abatements are from the backlog that we were provided, that some of the residents hadn't received any response at all from the previous assessors, so just cleaning that up.
Okay. Let us pray.
Yeah, so I've met and discussed all of these with the property owners and individuals involved, and everybody is happy, I believe, and at least in agreement with where we are.
That's very good news. Thank you.
Yep, sure.
Okay. So, we have, do you want to, by any order, or?
I think he's, he's got a different order than what's on here. Why don't we go with what you're, yeah, Chris?
Were you looking to go down through, I mean?
What, yeah.
Generally, what we found is there's a lot of land adjustments based upon deep water classification as opposed to title. So that's what the majority of these are land adjustments because of that. And there are some, a few that are, we went out and did a few inspections and modified some of the building grading, so there's a little bit of that, but mostly land.
Okay, awesome. So tell me who's up first, and then I'll just.
So here I have Susanna Chathampool. This was a land and building adjustment.
So I'll read it for the record, so it's unrecorded. Okay. So this is abatement 23-81 for map and lot U17-022. The old value was $467,500 for land, $111,300 for the building, with a total value of $578,800. The new value for the land is $278,900, with a building value of $86,600, taking the new value total to $365,500, with a recommended abatement for the land of $188,600. Building value of $24,700, with a total of $213,300, and an abated tax amount of $1,450.44. I move that we recommend that, that we approve the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Fifteen? And there's a total of right around 20 abatements tonight. Twenty-one, twenty-two. And we did update the certificate of abatement, so there's a place for every member of the board to sign before submitting to the tax collector.
Excellent.
Next one, Kathy Coombs, map U13-009. Another land adjustment, not really much of the last one, but reduced down.
So this is for Kathy Coombs, map U13-009. The original old value for the land was $398,700, with a building value of $105,900, with a total value of $504,600. The new land value is $332,200. The building is at $105,900, with a total value of $438,100. The land was abated for $66,500, with an abatement tax amount of $452.20. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Any discussion? Any comment?
Give me a second.
Any second? Second.
All in favor?
So there's a.
Mine, your way.
There's a second one here for that, that.
It could just be a second five.
Okay, I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
It's fifteenth, right? Still the fifteenth?
By the time we get to 20, maybe we'll have a difference, but yes.
So then Lloyd and Robert, or Robin Johnson, excuse me. This one was just a land adjustment.
So this is Matt, Lloyd and Robin Johnson, map U13-003. The old land value is $468,500, with a building value of $274,700, with an exemption of $40,900, and a total value of $702,300. The new land value is $390,400. The building value remains the same at $274,700. The exemption remains same at $40,900, with a total value of $624,200. And the abated land value is $78,100, with an abated tax amount of $531.80. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in? All in favor?
Next one, Bruce and Cheryl Farm. This was a land classification change from deep water to title.
This is Bruce and Cheryl Farm, map U24, lot 013, with an old value of, for land of $785,800, and a building value of $434,600, with a $25,000 exemption, and a total value of $1,195,400. The land value, the new land value is $523,800, with the building value of $422,500, an exemption of $25,000, with a total value of $921,300. The land abatement value is $292,000. The building abatement was $12,100, with a total abatement value of $274,100, and an abated tax amount of $1,863.88. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Frederick Woods Trust, do you want me to summarize these for you?
Sure.
Or do you need me to do them?
Yeah.
Another title three classification, moving down the title.
So this is the Frederick Keywood Revocable Trust, map U24, lot 014. The original land value, old land value is $706,100. The building is $377,000, with a total value of $1,083,000. The land value, the new land value is $470,700. The building value is $373,200, with a total value of $843,900. The new land abated value is $235,400, a building abated value of $3,800, with a total abated value of $239,200, and an abated tax amount of $1,626.56. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion?
Yes.
What was the name? Because.
The Frederick Keywoods Revocable Trust.
What's the address? Because we're not spotting it on the list.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Is that fourteen, or would drive?
Thank you. Yeah.
All on it?
Yep.
All in favor?
It's going to show me. I don't know what's wrong with me. It's been a long day. A big one.
Yeah, there was a lot going on with this one. This one was building adjustments on this property.
Which one was this?
This is the Pluto, Lorraine Pluto.
Oh, sorry, I'm in the wrong there. This is Lorraine Pluto and the Credit Shelter Trust, map U24, lot 027. The old land value, the old land value is $511,500, with the old building value of $285,700, with a total old value of $797,200. The new land value remains same at $511,500. The building value is $121,500, with a total value of $633,000. The abated building value is $164,200, with an abated tax amount of $1,116.56. I move we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Next one in front of you, Elizabeth Press, and this was a land classification adjustment.
Elizabeth Press at map U17, lot 012, with an old land value of $483,200, and a building value of $314,500, with a $25,000 exemption, and a total value of $772,700. The new land value is $322,200, with building value of $314,500, and an abatement, and an exemption of $25,000, with a total value of $611,700. The land abated value is $161,000, with an abated tax amount of $1,094.80. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, I said eight. That was August 25th. I don't know what's wrong with me.
Tech school, though.
It's still wearing on me.
Sometimes the repetitive thing.
It's just the date. It's got a hard number on the page.
repetitive stuff is so hard to keep track of.
So I think this one, we have a couple. So a few of these were late additions this afternoon that may not have made the list that was on the website, just for clarification. This one, I believe, I put together, '88 and '98, Lamont. There might be two, there might be a second abatement application that we behind.
Oh, yes, there is. Uh-huh.
So just want to make sure we have the right ones here.
On, okay, Sam, just crossing.
Yes. So the first, they're all the, first one is just land. It's for Carolyn Lamont, for map R01, lot, I'm sorry, lot 012. The old land value is $67,000, with the new land value of $35,000, and the abated land value of $32,000, with an abated tax amount of $217.60. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
I'm going to hold on and give you the second one for this.
Yep.
So this is Lamont Carol, Carolyn, on map U04, lot 006, with an old land value of $106,000, a building value of $305,900, with a total value of $411,900. The new land value is $91,000. New building value is $272,300, with a total value of $363,300. The land abated value is $15,000. The building abated value is $33,600, with a total abated value of $48,600, and an abated tax amount of $330.48. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? So there's going to be two to sign here.
I, I said nonstop today.
I can still forget anything. Sit down, I mean.
And it is all iced tea.
We've heard that story before. Miss that one.
Who, who are we, Steve?
Who are we, Steve? Next one, Michael Greenstreet, Carolyn Buck. These were land and building adjustments based on discrepancies found on the property.
So this is for Michael Greenstreet and Carolyn Buck, map R02-005. The old value for land is $137,800. The old value for the building is $262,000, with an exemption of $25,000, taking the total to $374,800. The new land value is $132,500. The new building value is $219,500, with a $25,000 exemption, taking the total value to $327,000. The land abated value is $5,300. The building abated value is $42,500, with a total abated value of $47,800, and an abated tax amount of $325.40. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Next one, Webb Family Revocable Trust. This is again another misclassification of the land, and we found the grading and condition of the building to be inconsistent with the rest of that portion of town.
The Regent, I'm sorry, the Webb Family Revocable Indemnity Trust, map U18-01005, with the land, old value of land of $778,200. The old building value of $870,600, with a total of 1.600, $1,648,800. The new land value is $528,200. The new building value is $760,300, with a total value of $1288,500. The abated land value is $250,000. The abated building value is $110,300, with an abated, total abated value of $360,300, and a total abated tax amount of $2,450.40. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
No worries. I caught it.
This one, Richard Armstrong, Susan Rhodes, and this was building adjustments with errors on the property cards.
So this is for Armstrong, Richard J., and Susan Rhodes, map U06-004A. The old land value is $226,200. The old building value is $328,100, with a $25,000 exemption, with a total value of $529,300. The new land value is $226,200. The new building value is $301,600, with an exemption of $25,000, and a total value of $502,800. The abated building value is $26,500, with an abated tax amount of $180.20. I move that we accept this recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
I'll take those in next time.
I was going to put '03.
Are you Sunday, or anything?
It's, I'm thinking, my son's going back to college tomorrow, so we've been, oh, you've been. A mess at the house, and he was born in '03, which is probably why I put that on there. He is on my mind. He gets no dinner tonight. Mom, it's up here. He'll be fine. He's got a father that will take care of him.
Give him a nice breakfast in the morning.
Shut it.
Next one, Nicolette Denson. And this was, again, land misclassification, a few building inconsistencies and errors. This one, I do believe, was, and I'd have to look specifically, but some of these properties were classified as deep water, oceanfront, and they're not anywhere close to, had or needing that value. So a lot of these, we're bringing them back in line with white properties.
So this is Nicolette Denson, map U22, lot 030, with an old land value of $944,200, a building value of $290,400, with a $25,000 exemption, taking the total value to $1,209,600. The new land value is $506,700. The new building value is $265,200, with an exemption of $25,000, and a total value of $746,900. The land abated value is $437,500. The building abated value is $25,200, with a total abated value of $462,700, and an abated tax amount of $3,146.36. I move that we accept this recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
It's catching. I'm getting out of right of the way, so. Well, why not Tyler?
Well, let's not go into blame. There's enough bad.
Next one, Frances Bartholomay. Again, a land adjustments based on classification.
This is Frances Bartholomay, map R04, lot 002, with an old land value of $485,700, a building value of $215,500, and an exemption of $25,000, with a total value of $667,200. The new land value is $323,800. The building value is $215,500, with a $25,000 exemption, and a total value of $514,300, with a land abated value of $161,900, and an abated tax amount of $1,100.92. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Next one, we have Susan Caldwell. Land adjustments based on misclassification.
So Susan Caldwell, map U18-001-002, with an old land value of $687,000, an old building value of $341,200, with a $25,000 exemption, and a total value of $13,000, $3,200. The new land value is $512,000. The new building value is $341,200, with a $25,000 exemption, and a total value of $828,200. The land abated value is $175,000, with an abated tax amount of $1,190. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Next one, David Bruce. Land adjustments based on misclassification.
So David Bruce from map U27-030. So, David Bruce from map U-27-034, with an old land value of four hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars and a building value of a hundred and ten thousand eight hundred dollars with a twenty-five thousand dollar exemption with a total value of four hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred dollars. The new land value is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars with a new building value of a hundred and ten thousand eight hundred dollars and a twenty-five thousand dollar exemption with a total value of three hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. The land abated value is a hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars with an abated tax amount of nine hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cents. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Next, we have Robert Ireland, uh, several other owners, Mark Gregory, Georgia, John, another misclassification of land, just a reduction in the land based on that.
So, Robert Ireland, Mark Ireland, Georgia Ireland, and John Ireland from map U-14-001, with the old value for land of five hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, the building value of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars with a total value of six hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. The new land value is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. The new building value is a hundred and eleven thousand dollars with a total value of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. The land abated value is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars with an abated tax value of one thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty cents. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, next is Daniel Willhite, uh, again, misclassification of land, uh, and some adjustments made to the building after inspection, uh, just somebody did that wrong that, that shouldn't have done.
So, this is Daniel Willhite Revocable Trust, map U-13-034-D02, with a land value, old land value of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred dollars, a building value of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred dollars with a total value of one million five hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred dollars. The new land value is five hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred dollars, the new building value is six hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred dollars with a total new value of one million two hundred and two thousand one hundred dollars. The land abated value is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the building abated value is ninety-one thousand dollars with a total abated value of three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and an abated tax value of two thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Next one is Truman Ledge LLC, uh, land and building adjustments. This one, if I remember right, was misclassification and there was, uh, some obsolescence given to this based just upon the steepness of the, the wall, and correcting some building classification errors.
So, for Truman Ledge LLC for map U-24 lot 026, with an old value of five hundred and two thousand one hundred dollars and old building value of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars with a total value of six hundred and seventy thousand one hundred dollars. The new land value is three hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred dollars, the new building value is a hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars with a total value of four hundred and eighty thousand four hundred dollars. The new land abated value is a hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars, the new building abated value is twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars with a total abated value of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars and an abated tax amount of one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. I move that we, we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? That's the word. Any discussion? All in favor?
Could we have just one question on that one? That had gone before the Board of Assessment Review, and the town had paid the legal fees to support the bar. The aggregate value, how close is that to that which had been sought during the buyer hearing? And if you don't know, I'm taking you by surprise, and Josh is new to the, new to this ballgame. I'm not even asking him, he's done what this week? Do, do you have, if we don't have that as a comparison, I withdraw the question. I apologize.
Please hold.
Okay. I said there are three hearings on that, so I'm just, same trust.
I can, I can look it up. So, they were asking for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in building, and they received twenty-four thousand two hundred. They requested seventy-two thousand. No, wait, wait, look, the request in, in real estate was seventy-two thousand for land and building was ninety-three thousand.
So, in the aggregate, what did they, because that's an excess of abates, only the aggregate, so forgive me. They asked to have the value reduced to what aggregate amount?
Hundred, they asked a reduction of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, they received a hundred and eighty-nine thousand seven hundred.
So, it's in excess of, of their request, and thank you for taking the time.
Is that what you were asking?
Thank you for taking the time to look that up.
Happy to help. Any other questions? I gotta get my date right. No more questions.
There you go.
There's one? There's one. A big clip on that one.
Yeah, this, this is a couple.
There's two on here.
This is the Patrick Nash properties.
They have a probable date here. It's contagious, don't drink the water. Already have, but it's water, not blueberry ice tea. As far as you know, that's what I'm here.
Uh, but for, for these two properties, uh, this is property that abuts Phippsburg, and there was a, an agreement between the two towns that was not realized when the revowal company valued these properties, so, in, th- this property is basically being assessed at a hundred percent in West Vast as well as Phippsburg.
That's wrong? No, like.
Just, there's an argument to that, you know?
No, 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 I'm kidding, that's not like.
But no, this is just bringing it back, I mean, I, I would say these two properties probably saw some of the biggest increases in town as far as, I mean, they had some land values at, you know, in the hundreds of dollars, like four or five hundred, and it went to hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, unbelievable how much these went up, but, um, this is just correcting, correcting that and bringing it back to really where it should be, in my opinion.
Their share abatement from the towns.
Correct.
Understood. So, there's two here, I'm gonna start with, um, this one. So, this is Catherine Nash, map U-27-003. The old land value is two hundred and ninety-one thousand four hundred dollars with a building value of seventy-seven thousand one hundred dollars and a total value of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The new land value is twelve hundred dollars, and there was no, and no buildings.
No buildings on this town.
Um, there's no buildings, but we were charging for a building. Um, so, the, the abated land value is two hundred and ninety thousand two hundred dollars, the abated bill, the, the abated building, value of seventy-seven thousand one hundred dollars if the building didn't exist, and a total value of abatement of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred dollars and an abated tax amount of two thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
That's part A. So, as, also with this parcel is Catherine Nash, map U-27-003A, with an old value for land of two hundred and twenty thousand four hundred dollars, an old val, value for the building of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-seven, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred dollars with a total value of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The new land value is sixty-two thousand dollars, the new building value is a hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred dollars with a total new value of two hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. The land abated value is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, the building abated value is eighty-one thousand three hundred dollars with a total abated value of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars and an abated tax value of one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Two more? Oh, my gosh, the last one. For now. How many do you think are outstanding after this one?
Two or three? Right around there. That may not even make it here, there's, there's a couple that are pretty, gonna take a little while to look into. Hopefully, we can, uh, last one, New Meadows River Cottages, um, this was more of a building adjustment than anything. We did reduce the land a little bit, but the cottages are, were assessed at a much higher quality than, than I felt that they should be, and especially in comparison with other, other properties in, in town and, and just how everything else was graded, so this was mostly a building reduction.
So, this is New Meadows River Cottages, map U-06 lot 004. The old land value is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred dollars, the old building value is five hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars with a total value of one million ten thousand seven hundred dollars. The new land value is four hundred and two thousand six hundred dollars, the new building value of two hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars with a total new value of six hundred and ninety-five thousand four hundred dollars. The land abated value is seventy-five thousand dollars, the building abated value is two hundred and forty thousand three hundred dollars with a total abated value of three hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred dollars and an abated tax amount of two thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars and four cents. I move that we accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
I have the old sheet on here.
Did we not update the signature portion?
No, we'll do that one later. I, so we'll just have to sign this one.
Yep.
So, maybe we could have Julie print this one and bring it down, and we'll sign it while we're here.
Okay.
She could do that.
Yep.
I'll do that one too. Oh, is it here?
So, we think you have two, three more abates tonight?
I believe we have two or three left pending from the, the stack that we had, yes.
Does the board know what the total refund dollar wise is so far in abates?
And we have to include the, the interest, which we haven't calculated either, so I don't know that.
And so, at some point, can the board let the public know how much money was reimbursed and how much of funding is left in the overlay account?
Absolutely. So, Tracy, when you, um, put these minutes together, can you take the list and the abated value and interest from Julie and add that to the minutes? Cause we went through that and, by numerically, so if you could just add that to your minutes and that's, and that'd be great.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Can we get a copy of the final?
Yes.
Of all, or your piece?
Just my piece.
We have a whole stack.
You, you will receive your copy. We have to, we have, so we have ta, we have to tabulate the interest, so in a couple of days, or next week, I don't wanna comment on what Julie's got on the plate, but okay, how about that? Yeah.
Before you receive your next check, Bill?
Well, I just want a copy of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I just come up and get a copy?
Yeah.
Call, call first, see if she's, I know she's working on getting, well, my neighbors, um, um, Rob and Scott Johnson, they, they wanted to know too, but I just said I would let them know.
Yes.
Which property, which property you had?
Um, Johnsons, the Johnsons and Appletons. And actually, and Frank, did you talk to Frank Bartholomay too? Does he know that he was approved? So, he, everyone was contacted. Oh, okay, cause I didn't get contacted today. Is that what you mean? They, a message went out to people, a phone call went out?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't get one.
I don't know, phone call didn't make it there or not?
Oh, maybe, maybe I'm mistaken. It's okay, it's still a win, it's a win. Thank you. Yes, but I don't, Julie has to, I don't, she needs to tabulate the interest due on those as well, so I don't wanna speak on her behalf, hope she gets to that, to give you what your final is.
Okay.
Is my point with that. Soon, I don't, but I don't know.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, the public, the public will be informed about what the total differences are, um, from what was, what was proposed and what was, what wasn't received and what was expended, so that there'll be a thorough accounting of what the differences are.
And how the overlay final.
And how the overlay final.
I, I had also asked on my other properties, on the ninety-two things point two, so I don't know.
I know we discussed, I, I have so many property, I'd have to sit down and go over again.
I'll talk to you next week. Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Why don't I, I'll get a clean copy of that.
Oh, sorry, or, I didn't have those in my, too. Thank you very much.
I'll take them upstairs.
Thank you very much.
That's kind of you, Josh, take those back upstairs. The world will feel safer for y'all.
I wrote it down. Thank you for your work, Josh.
Sure, my pleasure, my pleasure.
All right.
I'll be right back.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome, my pleasure. What were the, everything the property, you have a microphone there here.
Okay, shall we talk amongst ourselves or go directly into select? I think you go right into the select we're being is four forty-nine. I think we should transition right into this, yes, um, we have a session, they might really get through all of this before that.
All right, maybe as the select board, um, could I have your wishes with the consent agenda, please?
So, I move that we accept the school's consent agenda, we have not seen the towns yet as presented unless Julie has that ready. Why don't you move that to the end, since she has that? I move that we take that as a last item.
Um, the, uh, next select board meeting will be September fifth at five thirty here at the town hall. First item, old business. Um, we've had previous discussions about the number of people who should be on the budget advisory committee. And we postponed that and it's time to decide. So, um, the traditional customary number has been seven.
Are all of those numbers active members here?
Yeah, we have them.
Is there any need at this point to change the number?
I think we have asked the, um, budget advisory committee their recommendation and their recommendation is seven. So I think we should honor, um, seeing our office that run the budget committee, that we should honor their decision.
I'm in agreement with that myself. Seven, seven is, is a larger number than most things that, uh, committees that we staff. And that is a good working committee. And it gives, the larger number gives us a good cross section of citizens. Any further discussion? Um, I would entertain a motion to set the, uh, recommendation for numbers, numbers of seven members for the select board. Uh, no, excuse me, for the budget advisory committee.
I make a motion that we set the number of positions on the budget advisory committee at seven.
Second. Second. And any further discussion? Uh, in favor of setting the number at seven? Any other discussion? Yes, sir David?
I would, uh, trust that the town will keep a list of anybody that does apply for the committee. So in case there is a re, renovation, we can fill that slot with, if they're still interested.
Yes. As soon as the town makes, um, finishes her notes. Would you keep track of anybody who's, who applies? Who expresses a desire to be on the budget advisory committee? So that if vacancies do occur, we will have a list of interested.
There was also somebody that came up at the planning board meeting, that there was an individual who had an interest in joining the planning board. They could not remember the name of that individual because they wanted to invite them on. So we, if we can research that and any other committee interests that we keep up, I'll say running tally of that. Cause I know that there was the planning board also had, had someone and, so we can, eh, look at that as well.
Okay. Good. Um, is there any other old business that, um, we should pay attention to today?
Not today, no. Not today.
Is there any other old business that we should add to the future agenda items while we're thinking of it?
That's okay. We put it off till the end. Plenty of time.
Thanks Julie. Okay. So no other, um, no other old business, new business. Okay. So under, uh, new business, I had, uh, communication from, um, Allison.
Hepler.
Yeah, or who's, um, running for, uh, the state, uh, House of Representatives. And she's been canvassing the neighborhoods. Um, she reported to me that there have been a number of people expressing concern about the, um, excessive speed, uh, people are driving, um, particularly concerned about the intersection where you come down the hill on State Road. And the Berry's Mill intersects and speeding on both sides, um, north and southbound or east and west, whichever. Is excessive and, um, some people feel endangered. There was also mention of the New Meadows Road and the old Brunswick Road area where people see a straightaway and hit the speed. So we can request an M dot, one of those radar things, um, um, and/or increased deputy presence. I have checked with Steve, um, if we have one of those radar machines, then Steve, we know as road commissioner would be obliged to move it from place to place. And he has, uh, he has agreed that he would be willing to do that. So do we want, do we want to request such? I know there's a, I'll say a queue and waiting line for that, so we should, if we're looking forward to it, we're probably going to want to put that in, into queue. Thank you.
I think it's a good idea, especially with schools starting in a couple of weeks. My only concern is they start doing most parking lots down on the State Road. That this is what's going to increase the traffic and the speeds and I don't think we're going to have a lot of control over it. Saginaw Hawkshire, I've seen them every single day for the last two weeks. At V I W the time, sitting and actually pulling over a lot of people. And I think just the increased traffic that we're going to have due to that parking lot, we have to sell ourselves off credit with that. We can ask for the sign, but I would be more worried about protecting the children than I actually am. Trying to slow down this traffic on State Roads, I don't think they're going to do it. That was Steve's concern as well. So, um, I don't think we need a motion with all three in agreement. So I can reach out to M dot, um, personally and ask Allison also to.
So is this, if, so is this at all related to the second item on here with the, the traffic light for the fire station? Is that something that will also?
No, that's a se, that would se, be a separate thing and we'd also have to request that from M dot. But this, that discussion, item number two, discuss the suggestion for emergency traffic light at the fire station was, um, a result of the discussion with Steve. And he's been concerned about, um, endangering both the public and the firefighters as, as people come whipping over that hill or either, in either direction and the fire trucks trying to pull out. Although they can discuss as they can, the fire truck moving doesn't move as fast as a car flying over that hill at sixty miles an hour.
But I was just, I was, if we're going to put in a second traffic light, we might be able to then, and there's things that we, you know, we've talked about before. Um, we have the ability to, um, alter the queuing and the longevity of the light during certain times of the, of the day. So we can, if we, we can.
What do you mean a second traffic?
Well, they've talked about putting an emergency light in the fire station.
That's not the same thing.
No, is there, no. Hold on, let me finish. Give me a sec. So if we queue the one that we have to a longer ti, where you, where you have a different timeframe of people racing and then, and the green and right, uh, you could, we can pause some of the traffic.
The fire department already has the ability to do that in an emergency.
No, 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 at the, at the current traffic light. Yes, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the traffic surges during V I W. We can affect the timing of that light to slow down the traffic as well. We don't have to run it, uh, you could extend a, a red or a green schedule at a certain time of day, say three fifteen to four o'clock or whatever it is.
They're just going to make them angry, they're going to go through anyways. And I think we're going to create more accidents to be on. Doesn't anger remove individuals coming out at those times. I think if you don't, they're set up now, so they're set up on a timed basis. I don't know how you're going to.
They stagger down. You, you just pause, make the light longer.
But if you make the light longer, you're going to make the traffic build up on the road longer. It's not going to solve the problem. You're missing back up that runs with in the back.
I think before you change anything, you wait and see how it plays out. Don't, keep an eye on it, let's see how it plays out.
I see when you, when you make that light red and people don't think they see traffic going, they go through the red line. And that's my concern if you, oh, they're going to be playing that chicken game. I can get through before.
You, you've had some, um, time ob, observing this position. Yes.
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 Yeah.
I, I'm confused. I thought this was a question about having a light that would block traffic when the fires, fire trucks have to leave.
That would be the only time that that light would work. It would be like the light in Wuppich used to be. So the fire department can make that light, can change that light when they have an emergency. So can Saginaw Hawk, so can.
Yeah, but there is, there is no light there.
Right currently, at the, at the New Meadows Watchers, they can change.
Do that one too.
But what Steve was suggesting was an emergency light at the fire station. And at least some warning signs on either side, because we don't have control of that highway. He's just concerned and I thought it was a legitimate concern.
I think, I would like to comment that I think of having a, a, a red light that could be activated by the fire department at the fire department would be a good idea.
And that's, that's what Steve was, was hoping for. Yes, David?
I think if you put a light there, you need to put two lights there. One each side of the hill. One down by the fire station won't do a bit of good. It's got to be before that, crack on the top of both hills. And I suspect maybe you can check with the state and see if they have any help in those lights. Or somebody reserves the funding we got?
That's already, uh, Resilience, maybe? The Daki Arba?
No.
Absolutely.
See if there's any funding for that.
That's a nice idea.
Or there might be another state grants available as a safety issue. But you need two lights there, not one light.
And I, I just wonder if, um, V I W would be willing to partake in this. I mean.
We should, we should communicate with them on, on maybe further staggering the departures.
I mean, they, um, they.
Pay the safety.
All their employees too.
Yeah. They should, they should be contacted relative to how they impact our town and they should contribute to the cost.
I think so.
What do you, or other solutions? There could be additional staggering of people coming in and going of.
On both. Well, I think they just, in the last couple of years, have changed from staggered shifts to back to having just.
Oh, no, they're doing stagger. They do three, three thirty and four. If you sit down here and watch this parking lot, you can just see the difference.
All right.
The, I built it in Brunswick is three. One at half is three thirty and up here they're getting them let up at four. And I think that's because we made a comment about not letting them out when the kids get out.
Yeah. Yes.
I, I'd like to go back to the Berry's Mill Road.
Yes.
I would love to see the way this slowed the traffic down on Berry's Mill. One of the places where they come down onto the causeway.
Yeah.
You know, speed up because you're going to have to go up a hill. There's people parked right there that are working on the waterfront. And, and you can't see. And there's no curb, it's ledge on both sides.
Right.
So, and I, I told the people come down Berry's Mill because they enforce the speed limit on High Street. So they take the place that isn't patrolled. And I think it's time you saw that.
Yeah, I want to change to if, we shouldn't have a sign before that causeway saying men working or claimed something.
I, I, I think the speed limit should be extended to there. It's forty miles an hour at that place. That means people are driving fifty and fifty-five miles an hour.
If they're mild.
And it, it thirty is not reasonable through there because it's congested, but the main thing is the old ledge right there.
So we'd have to approach the state. So it sounds like it could be a good time to engage M dot in conversation about our concerns.
On this, how?
And he brought this. And, and Miss Hepler and, um, and, and other people who may be currently running for that position. It's, um, it's kind of dangerous when you're doing this speed limit, which I often do. The people that come out behind you and start prowling you on those curves. And when I have to go from Berry's Mill Road onto Hill Road and there's somebody on my tail, I'm like, ooh.
And it's a big truck.
Y'all, and they're going fast. So, um, with your, um, once it, I will call M dot.
And maybe Allison.
And Allison.
Yeah.
David?
And the sheriff.
And, yes, and.
I'm going to propose to hand you a couple more tickets. The sheriff hands out a couple more tickets for speeding.
Oh, I get that. You guys, we need to, they are spending a lot of time in this town. I don't want you to think they're not, they are really spending a lot of time, but we need to give them credit for that.
Right.
When you talk to the sheriff, tell him they're welcome to sit in our dr, in our driveway with the radar on.
They have a break down when they come up over the hill.
They come over both hills.
Yeah.
Way too fast.
Yeah.
I agree.
We'll take them cookies.
Okay. I, I will pass that on.
Thank you.
I think the cookies may, may have just.
Yeah, may have.
I'll get the meat on. Okay. So I, I will report back on that as soon as I have something to report.
As the, the traffic light at the fire station, how do we perceive that? Is that a state?
Yeah. Yeah. They have, they have control of the state board. Then the, um, we have the opportunity as a town to vote on the, um, M N A executive committee. We have the information in our, um, in our packet.
I have your document.
Awesome. You have the revision. So we have, um, we have the opportunity, do we, we should, don't do so? That there's not anybody running against for those votes?
Yes.
It's vote for one and there's only one and vote for three and there's only three. So, um, shall we just? Yes, Jane.
M N A.
Main Municipal Association. Thank you. Um, they provide a great many services for the town. And I don't know any town in Maine that would be working without them. They, they are awesome. So they're, they testified before the legislature about things that, um, being proposed that will affect towns. They have a legal department that gives good legal advice. So Suzanne, I see you're filling in the, uh.
Ballot?
No, I'm putting the names down. I didn't put any votes on here. But we have to sign it.
Well, we would, we would have to vote to cast one ballot and shall we do that? I will be cast one ballot for the, um, Main Municipal Association proposed officers. Second. Any further discussion?
Could you read the names, if I'm curious?
All right. I can do that. Justin Forrester, who's the Mon, Monmouth Town Manager, is, um, being, um, proposed for one year term as vice president. Um, for executive committee on for three years. David Seer, who's the town manager in Frenchville. Michelle Varu, Varuolo. I don't do well with games that are Anglo-Saxon, I'm sorry. Varuolo Lo, Cole, select person for the town of Bethel. And Matthew Garsal, Garside, who is the town manager of the town of Hollet. And those are three people up for three year terms.
Thank you.
And, um, according to the Bible, S, M N B doesn't provide, provide any candidates. So you have one ballot for.
One ballot for the.
All great. Did we have a second?
Second?
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'll send it down for signature.
Okay.
There's another signature. Okay, and we also have, and a gorilla pen. We also have the, uh, certificate that we just approved. Thank you. Um, do we have any other new business that should be added? Oh, warrants, thank you. Um, in a minute. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a second? Do you want to check it out, or should I just go ahead? Second. On favor. I'm not sure. Okay. Oh, sorry, I took. Public comment. Can we just, um, I hesitate to bring this up when I was asked to. Because as everybody, I'm sure, is aware, my, and the road commission is sister. But he didn't ask, apparently he had some road work done, and then was told there was no money. So I'm concerned about our communication and how we proceed with. You've got to help me with this. We just hired some gave him the contract for birth point. So how do we proceed with timelines and, and that's all we asked, I don't know.
So we, so for, I guess for the record for that, um, because our revaluation process has paused the process in getting to commitment, and I should say laying us to a commitment at a date sooner than, or later than like today. Um, we made some in the product rest tonight, and we're in the process of doing the rest of components necessary for us to get to commitment. So for the taxpayers, commitment is how we bring in money to pay the bills on behalf of the town's expenses. So we, because we've delayed our commitment, we're now delaying our receivables. And so we actually took a note, it's called a TAN, to bridge the gap between receivables from revenues to, and so we can cover our expenses. Um, so we, the money is on the horizon.
I understand that what I'm concerned about is our communication to our people that do services for us, and we need to find a way to communicate better, and we need to find a way for somebody, and I, I don't care who it is, to reach out to the road commission and tell them our plans. Okay, let me do that. Um, yes, I was somewhat surprised by that myself.
So the, the, it's, I don't want the, the, the money is coming. It's just coming later than we planned. So that, not to scare the community, but it's.
Why do you tell people who have already done their work?
A hundred percent.
Big amount of money.
A hundred percent.
Well, we could have avoided that with some communication. And it was also, um, that expenditure was approved at town meeting, right, so.
And it's just that we've, um, and we're, we're looking at, um, anyone working with school and getting a proposed quarterly. Uh, we spoke briefly with Emily when she was here, to, to tell us what's on the horizon, uh, quarter, so we can plan for it. You know, we, we haven't had that function, and it's certainly be beneficial for the town to see what the planned expenditures are. Um, certainly for you, Keith, and, uh, and help us plan better than what we've been doing, because it's, it's certainly the beginning of the school year, there's a high amount of money necessary, and we're going to need to cover that as well as other expenses in the town. And we have been delaying our receivables because of what's happening with the rebal. We are definitely on track, um, and we will make our commitment. We're hoping to, um, and I asked Josh matter-of-factly, I said, any chance it'll be done by the end of August? Maybe. He said probably more that September fifth is the day he gave me. I said, I like the end of August better. If we could do it before Labor Day, that would be great. I don't know where that stands. But there's a significant amount of work that, um, none of our deeds were processed for the entire last year, um, for the town. So now that there's all these pieces that had to have happened that weren't made done on a regular basis, um, that we're catching up to right now. And that's, so there's, we're, we're working through it, and we will get through it. Um, and it's just a hiccup.
Getting that heel question from Steve. We owe him money?
We don't owe him. We owe people he contracts.
Okay, if we owe those people, do we have a bill in hand that's like net thirty? Do we pay interest when we're not paying our bills?
I don't believe we've had a significant bill come through. I think if some of the work is, the start of some of this work is perhaps.
Steve said he had a call to put in. He came down to get money. I was told that that time it wasn't.
Well, then we owe those people, and we owe them interest if we're not paying on time.
We, we just received the bill. That bill was just in this one. So it's, it's a new bill, and we just.
How long did it have it?
I, I, there's a date on there.
And is there a date on it? Is it due net thirty, not fifty?
The, the work is not a week ago. It's not like we.
And I don't care when it was done. I asked the question.
I don't have.
Is the bill done a date?
She's looking at it right now. She's looking at it right now. It just came through. The work was done a week ago, so we're not even close to a net thirty timeframe.
But what do we agree about paying people?
We don't pay in advance. That's for sure.
Okay, Suzanne, I didn't ask that question. Do we even know?
No, no, we have one there for, there's, keep going.
Yeah, I was just questioning something, that's all. Just looking at the bill.
What do you?
Just, um, in terms of the communication. I, I, as a person who has had contracts with towns, I have always had the town approach me if they need me to stand down and stand in line before compensation. And I completely agree, Jane, that that is basic business communication without regard to the size of the invoice I was getting.
When was that? Does it show?
It says it was due eight seven.
The work was done on eight seven.
Remember, it says due eight seven. I don't know why the work was done, but it says due eight seven, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars.
How much? Is that for the call?
It is. The call was just done a week. It was, that's a point. It was just done.
In business, many people want payment when the work is done. It doesn't indicate when you think it says it's due. So the question of communication is, how do you pay? How do you communicate them? Do we pay interest?
So, Jane, the way we have bills and billing done here is we only do two orders a month. So regardless of when they submit a bill, the town only processes payment twice a month.
Is that legal?
It is legal. I may speak to, in terms of the communication. The three of you, when you sign or discuss a contract for services, it should be clear within the contract for services if interest is going to be due without regard to how frequent, well, that, that should all be within the contract.
Well, it's just that.
And I applaud that you are asking, honestly, Kathy, and I applaud that Jane is saying, as a small business owner, it makes me sound small potatoes. But fifteen thousand dollars in cash flow for me, as a small business owner, is significant. And that goes to people other than the individual billing most likely. If we want a good relationship with people, we need to pay promptly, and if we can't pay promptly, we shouldn't be paying interest to those contractors.
So the communication on the day that I was asked to check into this was, they were just told there was no money. Now we're paying it tonight, so the commu- communication can then, we'll have money in two weeks to pay.
Yes, and should have been.
Should have been.
Right away available as an answer to the question, I agree with you.
And they should know at any time that it's gonna be at least two weeks. And they should know it should be reflected on their bill.
Let me communicate with Steve, don't worry, because I, I just think he was embarrassed, and if he knew what was gonna be a little bit of time before he got money, because his thought, how do I tell this guy I can't pay?
Exactly. And that shouldn't be his responsibility either.
No.
But the, truthfully, the, the work was just done. It was within a week, and.
You know what? He's already paid for materials. It's a move, it's a move.
People should know when they're gonna get paid.
Yes.
Um, because it might, it might affect when they do, when they start a particular job, so.
Right.
That, that is important to know, and we should make that clear.
And that's how misunderstandings end, people thinking the town's on the money. Right.
Well, and, and, and we don't want that necessarily. And we don't want people who have been reliable, um, sources of work completed to decide that we're not worth working with. That would be awful. Public comment? Anymore?
What an easy question. The preliminary state valuations.
Yes.
Have gone out alphabetically. I still don't have Woolwich. I got Pittsburgh, I still got Toxic. You may and may not have West End, and I'm not surprised if you're not yet aware, if you have West End. But I do want to bring it up as a public comment. It will be the first audited look at the result of power per priesment's efforts for which they were fully compensated a year ago. And at the end of a revale, you should be coming in on your non-waterfront and your waterfront very close to a hundred percent on both categories. If you find an extreme contrast, a wide range between us two, clearly you have voted in the past to look at potential legal, I can't remember the term that you voted.
Legalist.
Thank you for that, Madam. Thank you. It's gonna wind up. As you continue to consider that, or perhaps discuss that and explore that, I really want to emphasize the importance of the result of this preliminary state valuation for you to really take carefully into consideration. And if it is something that those of us who are experienced with this for decades can offer any insight on reading that, it, I find it takes some practice over the years to be certain that what I am reading on that return really sinks into my head, and I've done this for a quarter of a century. Please make it very clear it's an agenda item.
Yeah.
When that has been returned, please, and, and let it be public.
Thank you.
I know that we filed our, um, what is it, the MRV? Is that right? MVR?
You can't file your MVR for this year.
No, they're not. It was, we, it was due November first, and we didn't file it until January thirtieth.
So you were penalized. We taxpayers were penalized to late filing.
And it also may, um.
But the MVR will not influence.
No, no, no. Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if it's, if it's gonna be delayed in how we get our paperwork also, in my, whereas going with that, if we get work out of queue perhaps, alphabetically, based upon our significantly late filing, a few months delay.
The MVR return will not influence when your state valuation comes back. It must come to you by certified notification, only within the last day of September. We used to collectively get these much earlier in the year. Um, just saying, I know that they've been going out alphabetically, you're probably with, Steve is no longer Deputy Director, and that Peter Lacy has returned as Acting Director. So they have been personnel shifts that may also have. But, yeah, when you get it, please make it public that it has been received.
Do we know that, to what go for? I have a note here. Check two of the votes. This take out.
You'll get it by certified.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that, that the state is basing valuation on our recent revale that we're making adjustments to it.
Yes.
Because the state valve, or pension debt with the county taxes and everything else.
So these overvalued properties have a negative impact on us right now?
Already.
I, I said that, I said, I said that ten months ago, that our valuation based upon what that came through is that we are gonna have a higher valuation in the county based upon what was presented.
But your maintenance will not influence preliminary state valuation, that will have no influence.
Okay, any more public comment? David?
Time will tell, but there's no clock yet.
Yes.
And, um, any luck on the snow climbing process for the town building?
Uh, no.
That should become an agenda item for next time.
Don't we have to set up another deal?
That's what I'm wondering, if you have sent it out yet.
I will check. Second, second, um.
And if, if nothing else, maybe a, a phone call to.
To our local.
In-town local.
Yeah.
Business, and see if they're interested.
So when you say that, um, I know we talked about sand. Do we need sand, and?
We need to get on the sand ride pretty quick, in the sols.
Add that to my conversation.
Okay.
But it's, it's August, yeah.
And we always mean to do it, and we always end up here.
In August.
When we should get it, but. Do we talk about, looks at, let's like, sometime maybe mid-September, do a workshop and set up the calendar for this is when we need to do this, so that.
We should really get that in June to run, and that's all summer to dry out.
It's not that much, anything else.
Yeah. It's not just a matter of putting the stuff in the shed. Okay, so, select word comments and announcements. Do we have any more to add to this that we haven't already said? I was just, have we heard any more on the Resilience Committee, and do we have members for that as Max? There was somebody who volunteered, and I am not remembering. Are you familiar with that yet? Crazy.
No.
Okay.
I know he, I came here, Max got with, um, John Dean.
Yes.
I saw that. Um, I don't know who else Max has met with.
He, he, I have, I did set him the names of the people that we had originally anticipated him, the contact people, and he was going to contact. So the other committee I was thinking of, the other thing we talked about was, wasn't it, um, by cap and extended that? Yes, and I have, um, not been up to stuff, but if you want to throw me on that committee, I don't mind. I'll throw you.
And I, and I can also sit on, I can sit on a chair if you're looking for a second one.
They, they wanted a contact, so I'll, I'll throw you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, other public comment? So, um.
Or it's a live board comment, I'm sorry.
Well, yes, so, well, so, just, you know, we did all this at four P.M.
Yes.
However, I happen to have your form sitting in front of me because we had to sign it. So would you like to hear what it was? Yes, and my understanding is that he's just on one of the two properties. Is that correct?
Um, I, so what I have here is land and building adjustments.
Could we put it?
I'm sorry. So this is for New Meadow River Cottage, um, which is map U O six dash zero zero four. Um, so the, I mean, read this.
Excuse me, just, you know, do you know the name of this person?
No.
Okay, she's gonna need that for the minutes. Could you please, you give your name?
Susan Rhodes. Thank you. And, and it's for New Meadows River Cottage. Um, so the old value, and I don't know, I don't know if this is answering your question for work of components. All I have in front of me, so it's, the old value for the land was four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. The old value for the building was five hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred dollars, with a total old value of one million, ten thousand, seven hundred dollars. The land was adjusted to a new value of four hundred, two thousand, six hundred dollars. The buildings were adjusted to two hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred dollars, with a new total value of six hundred and ninety-five, four hundred dollars. The land was abated seventy-five thousand dollars. The buildings were abated two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred dollars, with a total abated value of three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars, and a total abated tax of two thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and four cents. Is that what you asked, or is it on the? Is that what you asked, was there another property coming?
There's another property.
That he didn't get to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that was approved, and it will be officially notified soon. Okay.
Um, your timing is excellent.
Is there, um, any other comment or announcements?
Are there any future agenda items around that topic? We added snowplowing, sand contract, and resiliency, is there anything else we want to add to September fifth?
We probably want to rediscuss the excess of speed and the, yeah, the fire stations, just so we don't lose that on the, right? Um, okay. Then, um, the motion to enter into executive session. Pursuant to M R S A four oh five six A to discuss a legal matter. Section, all in favor?
That's by the lawyer.
I mean, excellent as well.
I'm sorry, we have, we have to dismiss you. Just get it here.
So we're entering executive session at five thirty-one.